Right. So it is now six oh six PM and Monday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call this special joint meeting of the City Council, WPCA and Board of Finance to order attending in person this evening, representing the City Council, our Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Kevin Arrow and Councilman Oliver, and attending in present, representing the Board of Finance, our Board of Finance member, Chris Bayes, Christopher Anderson, Lorraine Pesky and Deb Iannaceto. So we have a quorum of both boards. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record. All right. So because this is a special meeting, the only items on this agenda are the only items that we can take action on. So item number one on the agenda is a motion to go into executive session before I call for the vote. Included in that executive session, I am asking that the motion include an invitation for Corporation Counsel Victor Michelle to participate, and I will be phoning him into the meeting when we get into the anteroom. So the motion I'm looking for is to enter into executive session pursuant to CGS Section one dash two hundred subsection six subsection B regarding pending claim litigation, Pepler versus the City of Torrington. And as I stated, including that invitation to include Attorney Victor Michelle. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Second by Councilman, or yes, Councilman Oliver. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we'll go to the anteroom. Okay. If we can open. So item number two on this agenda, for the record, it is now six twenty-seven PM. I will entertain a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes and Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So item three, I have to take this in two motions. The first motion would be made by City Council. I will entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of fifty thousand dollars from contingency funds fiscal year twenty-four for partial payment towards a settlement of Superior Court case. Oh, LLICV two one six zero two nine four four five. This is a case of the estate of Christopher Pepler versus the City of Torrington.
So.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Ruette. I heard Councilman Manichia. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And to the Board of Finance, I will entertain the motion to expend fifty thousand dollars from contingency funds for partial payment towards settlement of the Superior Court case as previously read, the estate of Christopher Pepler versus the City of Torrington. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Bayes. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before these boards on this meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Bayes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming out, dodging the raindrops.
We have to wait till six thirty, right? Especially we have to wait till six thirty this time.
It's six twenty-nine.
Yeah, okay. Oh, that clock is slow.
Can't see it. Got a glare from the light.
Yeah, it's like twenty-seven.
Six thirty.
Oh, there we go.
All right, it is now six thirty PM. So I'm going to move right into the next meeting in our lineup this evening. For the record, this is a regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA, Monday, August twenty-seven, excuse me, Monday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And as you heard for the record, it is six thirty PM. At this point, the record should show participating in person, Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Cavanero and Councilman Oliver, and participating via Zoom is Councilwoman Hona. So we have our quorum. I'll move into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section four subsection E of the City Council and WPCA meeting rules of procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. And seconded by Councilman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing and hearing none? Let's move into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wasn't there. Should I abstain?
Yes. So for the record, one abstention would be Councilman Manichia. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Donna Isley representing a tenant position. These are Fair Rent Commission appointments, just so I can frame the motion correctly. I'd like to entertain the motion to approve the following appointees, Donna Isley as a tenant, Kevin Hayes landlord, and Scott Matava representing neither landlord or tenant to the Fair Rent Commission for a one-year term, which will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And three B is again, I am looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Travis Lipinski representing landlords and Connie Quinn representing neither a landlord or tenant to the Fair Rent Commission for a two-year term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Manichia. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will, we are still looking for two additional appointments to this commission. I am looking for minority party representation. So I will be reaching out to see if we can fill in those last two seats. Item four, I will entertain a motion by the City Council here enacting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund four ninety, sanitary sewer capital improvements. The first invoice, two two eight eight four four to Wright Pierce in the sum of two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Invoice one four six four to Yield Industries, thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars, and invoice fourteen sixty-five to Yield Industries for seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following four appointments as recommended by the Services for the Elderly Commission in their June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Mark, excuse me, Mike Gardenello, Ed Wilmot and Mary Ann Berlinsky as regular members with a term expiring on July fifth, two thousand and twenty-six, and Giannis Colangelo as an alternate memo member to fill the remainder of a term set to expire July fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions or comments on these appointments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief and the Purchasing Agent to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer the purchase of management and reporting software services for the Torrington Fire Department from locality media, DBA First Dew of Garden City, New York in the amount of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. These services will be funded through the Fire Department's software GL account, having been previously approved by the Board of Public Safety and further explained in letter from the Purchasing Agent dated July twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions? I see our fire department is all represented this evening. No questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. I'll entertain a motion to waive the city's procurement process requiring, that requires three quotes for a purchase under ten thousand dollars, and authorize the purchasing agent and police chief to utilize the state's procurement rules under General Letter number seventy-one, bless you, which allows for the direct purchase without obtaining competitive quotations or bids for the purchase of law enforcement service dogs and to enter into the agreement with Norbert Safko of Summitville, New York for the purchase of a patrol canine for nine thousand five hundred dollars as outlined in Norbert Safko's quote dated July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. This has been approved by the Board of Safety.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. And seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Are there questions or comments?
Yeah, just whenever we waive the procurement process, it's usually because there's not a lot of people that actually do this work.
So yeah, and we were phrasing this rather carefully because, as you know, by charter, any purchase over ten thousand dollars requires a bid process. What our practice is, when it's less than ten thousand dollars, is to ask the department heads to get three quotes. This being a service animal, a highly specialized law enforcement animal, you certainly don't want to go with the lowest bidder. You want to go with the most qualified, and you want to work with a handler or a service dog provider that not only trains the animal, but works with the animal handler and continues the training. And if for any reason it's not a good fit, that would also work with the department in finding a proper replacement. So yeah, this is unique, and the state does recognize those unique. Yes, yeah, absolutely. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for tree trimming and removal services for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four at the same price and terms as a current contract to a Splint Tree Expert Company of Willow Grove, Pennsylvania, as further explained in the Purchasing Agent's letter dated July thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion, this is in three parts, regarding a marketing consultant. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer a contract with Minson Hope of Avon, Connecticut for the development of a strategic marketing plan for the sum of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to be funded through the city's Building Healthier Communities grant.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. The floor is open for questions, and I see Rista is here, if there are questions.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, can go first.
Thank you. Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Excuse me, first of all, how did we arrive at Minson Hope as the agency, ad agency? Approved ad agency, number one, and what is their most recent experience doing this kind of stuff? And one of the website, I just couldn't quite figure out some of what they were talking about, and the estimated cost is thirty-eight thousand five hundred, but then in fine print, which I can't read, I think it's there. They provided this to the city, right, Minson Hope? They propose a RFQ, that's theirs?
No, the RFQ is our bid process. So I'll turn it over to Rista and she can.
What is this underneath estimated cost? There's some other fine print, which I really like to clarify.
Sure.
So let me start with your first question. So we knew that we needed a, some strategic to we needed some strategic advice on how do we, you know, we've created all these commercials, all these assets. How do we really get our message out to a larger audience that we're not doing now? So we we using some of our Building Healthier Communities grant, we went out for an RFQ and an RFP process to select a consultant. Now, we did this in two processes very specifically. I think you guys are very familiar with the QBS process, which is a quality-based selection. We've done it for engineering services and others in the city. So we went out, we did an RFQ to look for qualified consultants. We got about twelve proposals. We interviewed seven. From the seven, we narrowed it down to Minson Hope that was the most qualified. The review committee was myself, Richard Lopez and Emily Hillquist, which is the Assistant Director of the Northwest Hills Council of Governments, because we do do a lot of regional marketing. We want to make sure that our efforts are aligned with other efforts that are happening. So through that process, Minson Hope rate came number one far and above the other proposals that we received. Then when we reviewed the fee proposals, did they still rank high? They weren't the highest, they weren't the lowest, they were kind of right in the middle of where we wanted to be. And so that's why there are selected consultant for this. Now, the next two on this agenda, I'll just kind of tell you why we're doing it in this order. Like other services that we procure, we want the highest quality, which is why we did the RFQ process. In that RFQ process, we asked for qualifications to develop the strategic marketing plan, but also for the implementation of the marketing plan. And so Minson Hope for the both implementation and development of strategy came number one. Katina Hungerford did not score high for the marketing strategy, but for her work she does with social media content development, she did score very high. So using the on-call service to implement our strategic plan as needed is why this is in three parts. The one developed that marketing plan, then the implementation phases. Using the qualified base selection process, these were the ones that really rose to the top of the most qualified out of the twelve proposals we received. Now, the the estimated cost, we've talked, we have talked to to the marketing consultant about this. They, they've built in certain interviews and they've built in a certain number of hours that they're going to work on things. If it comes in less, the bill us less, they won't bill us more than this. And the small, small language, I think you see this in a lot of contracts, it's kind of boilerplate that it does not include any out-of-pocket expenses such as purchase of stock photography, printing, all out-of-pocket costs, which be estimated and approved in advance, costing that include applicable taxes. We're tax exempt, so that doesn't apply. And any work that falls outside of the scope listed above will be reviewed and estimated according to rate card in advance for approval. So this is just saying, if, you know, we want any work outside of this scope, they would give us those costs ahead of time.
Okay. So the deliverables are specifically free proposals, is that right?
So the, there's three motions from you. The deliverables from Minson Hope are this one through six, but what we're asking for City Council tonight are the three motions in the agenda. So to approve the strategic plan proposal, and then to enter into an on-call consulting service with both Minson Hope and Katina Hungerford for the implementation of the the plan. And as you know, we do have twenty thousand dollars a year set aside for marketing in our lineup. So, you know, the on-call services would be adjusted either through the grant or through those funds as they were available. So we wouldn't exceed that.
Okay. And my last question is just, just so I know. Who have their work for recently and, you know, what is, you know, what are they bragging about doing recently?
Um, so they have done, I should have brought the proposal with me. They have done a significant amount of work. They're right in Avon. They're very familiar with Torrington, too, have grown up in Torrington, so they understand what we've done. They've worked with the state, they've worked with a lot of other municipalities. They are the largest company that places ads in digital media, so they do understand, you know, that strategic ad placement, if we chose to go that way, they understand social media. I'm trying to remember some of the towns off the top of my head, but it's
Middletown.
Yeah, Middletown was one of the ones that they had done. That was a recent proposal that they worked on.
And it was positive feedback. There are results, provable results from their work?
Yes. Yes. Yes, they can. And so one of the things in here is in the smart start is the quantified KPI goals, and KPI goals are from the marketing, and this is what they have. This is where they were really strong was identifying what are those data points that we're going to use for success or not success? Is it just the number of likes you get on a social media post? Or is it something more like increased revenue? So getting some benchmark data for, you know, sales, and then, you know, checking that in six months? Is it, you know, new businesses coming to town? What are our benchmarks that we're trying to create? And then collecting that baseline data so we know that if our marketing is working or not working? And they were really strong, and that's why they rose to the top for that one particular reason.
All right. So what's the next step for them to present to the council of their work? What are we going to see from them and approximately when?
So.
We've had several, we've been nipping at this problem, you know, over the years in different ways. And, I mean, I remember some action, action, what is activating alleyways sort of proposals and things, and they just go into the ether and what can we, for thirty-eight thousand plus, what can we see and when can we see it from these people?
So this will take three to four months to develop. So you'll see that deliverable. It will be a strategic plan with, how are we promoting the assets that we have? If we need to develop new assets, and when I mean assets, I mean those marketing assets, like the commercials that we create, we created. And I think you're feeling kind of like I am feeling by even asking that question. We have done a lot of this. We've created four commercials. We've created all this stuff, but we don't see the traction that we wanted to see. So this is going to help us get that traction, make sure that we're getting, reaching the right audience and target audience, and they're going to put together a proposal to do that. Tell us if we're, maybe we're not messaging it to the right people the right way. So they're going to tell us how to do that and what needs to be done. And then that will be presented to you, and then we'll go on to implementation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hona, you had questions?
I did, but Councilman Cavanero got lots of them in. So the only one I had was about the Building Healthier Communities grant. Forgive me for not remembering. Where did that grant come from and how much is in there?
So the Building Healthier Communities grant was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from Building Healthier Communities, which was established when Hartford Healthcare and Charlotte Hungerford merged. The goal of this, of building, of creating, building healthier communities was to support economic development within Winston and Torrington areas. So between, it was about two million dollar, if I recall correctly, overall fund. Torrington got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, and Winston did get a large portion as well. Within that, we had several different deliverables that we were going to fund. It was awarded right before COVID, so some of the things had to take a back burner, you know, and we worked through it, but this marketing strategy was part of the original deliverables in that grant award.
So we must still have quite a bit of the money in there, right? Out of the seven hundred and fifty thousand, have we spent a large portion of it on anything else?
We are about a little more than halfway through that proposal with the different things that we've, we've done.
Okay. We can certainly bring a report back on the status of that grant.
Yep.
As Rista said, it was awarded in two thousand and nineteen. And many of the initiatives that we proposed to fund were put on the back burner because of COVID. And yet we were still able to accomplish some of the goals under the grant because they did provide assets and resources for us to communicate with the public during COVID. So really good work happened, has happened out of it.
It has, and some of it has really been strategically delayed because, you know, we don't want to put forth this big marketing effort for people to come visit our businesses when our businesses weren't open, or they couldn't open to capacity, or they were still struggling through workforce issues. Now is really a time when we're seeing that businesses need this. They can take that additional capacity, and we want to make sure that we're moving this forward. So this wasn't delayed for any other reason, other than it was strategic to make sure that we were, you know, having the best impact for these funds, and it was doing what we wanted it to do, and our businesses were able to. It didn't work against us, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
All right, thank you. Those are just my questions.
Good questions. Yeah. Other questions or comments? Then I will call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, nine B, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate an on-call service agreement with Minson Hope for the implementation of the city's strategic marketing plan. Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Manichia. Questions? I think that Rista covered this. Yeah.
One request, ma'am?
Please.
Yes, once you negotiate that, can, as soon as you had us finalized, can we, the City Council, see it?
Absolutely.
Just so we know what we're spending.
Yes, yeah. You know, and I liked the phrase you used, we've been nipping at the heels. I mean, so many of the foundational things that have happened over the last couple of years, the creation of these videos that show what life is like in the City of Torrington, you know, what is the arts community like? These are great videos. And I know that we've shared them with the council in the past, but maybe it's an opportunity to refresh what those videos look like. They run, they range a minute and a half to three minutes long. You know, and having a strategic advisor tell us, how do you bring that down to maybe a thirty-second soundbite that become part of a bigger strategy for attracting tourism or attracting businesses? So.
Just design, if there's like last-minute things that need to be highlighted or?
Yes, Rista, thank you.
So, so one thing that I can, might come out of this, you know, if it says we want to take one of our commercials and air it on TV, I don't know how to do that. We would contract with this consultant to work with the production companies and the advertising agencies to run that ad for us. So, you know, that's a contracted service. That's a very specialized type of work to run ads. You know, you have to have relationships, you have to know which advertising agencies to call and be media placements, where's the best media placement for you? So they would help us with that kind of technical advice. Also, if we needed to create any additional assets, they would help us with that. You know, so if we needed, you know, we said, we decided we wanted to do a mailing or an insert in a newspaper somewhere, they would help create that. But until we know what that strategy is going to be and where our priorities are going to be, we don't know what services they would be able to provide for us. But Minson Hope is of they do it all. So they have the capacity to help us with everything from print to radio to media to creating the content. So they're very you know, well-versed in being able to help us however we need it in the future.
And those expenses, as Rista has already mentioned, would come out of the annual twenty thousand dollar marketing budget that she has in her department. So the thirty-eight thousand dollars is coming from the Building Healthy Communities. Any of these other additional on-call services would be coming Any of these other additional on-call services would be coming from the $20,000 budget.
I, I, I'm just cautioning as someone who used to work for many, many years. Post-production in media in Los Angeles, a lot of these things aren't all that complicated. Okay? So I just don't want us being led by the nose, um, by an agency out of Avon about how difficult and challenging a time consuming that kind of stuff is because it's not that difficult to learn how to do it. I, I'm saying, fine, let them do it to start with. But at some point, I think.
I think as we. Sure. I think as we navigate our way through this, I would agree with you, you know, there's a learning curve, you know, for. Yes. Um, and I would even suggest that, um, Rista has come before this board uh, on a quarterly basis and updated the board on what's going on with economic development. This could certainly be a part of that report so that the board is aware.
That's all I'm asking.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I do know, working with these kinds of people for many years, so.
So I think, you know, Paul asked the question in terms of where this agreement, the money is going to come from. So that 20,000 that's in the budget at this point. So that's basically your cap in terms of the on-call service.
Annually. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Just hold on because I'm sure there'll be more questions for nine C. All right. If there are no other questions on nine B, I'm going to call this motion all in favor. Any opposed? All right. Nine C, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to execute, excuse me, act on behalf of the city, negotiate an on-call service agreement with Katina Hungerford for the development and promotion of social media content.
So my question, I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Cavanaro. All right.
Question I have is that 20,000 is really for both B and C?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? And Katina Hungerford is someone local. And it's nice to have somebody who lives in the community with their finger on the pulse of the community to help with this. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rista. All right, item 10. Oh yeah, I think you better hold on. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the Economic Development Director's report on a $2 million brownfield remediation grant to assist with the abatement and selective demolition of 70 North Street.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Okay. So you've, um, all read the memo or the report. I, do you have questions? Do you want to do just the highlights?
I just wanted to, to, this is a little bit unusual and I wanted to just tell you while you're, you're getting this memo and, and this is a a policy that I plan to use moving forward. So we've received a lot of state grants and most of the time, the city takes the lead on the project. So we do all the procurement, we do all the reporting and city council, you know, kind of checks in as we go through and select the consultants and move along. This is the first time that we've entered into a pass-through agreement with Torrenton Standard for the demolition and abatement of 70 North Street. There's a lot of really good reasons to do that because the overall project was over $4 million. So the city didn't want to have to manage a $4 million project when we had only $2 million in grant funds. So as a pass-through, the Torrenton Standard selects the contractor, hires the contractor, and then we identify where that $2 million gets applied. And as the contract moves forward and those line items get paid, they come through my office and our finance office, reviewed by both the state and myself to make sure they're in compliance with state regulations and all that. I think that it's very important that we have, still have check-ins with city council um, at these milestone markers throughout these projects because ultimately the city is the grant recipient. So I wasn't quite sure how to do that, um, without asking for approval of a contractor. But we can't tell a private organization who to select or why to select. If they followed the, the rules and guidelines of the state procurement, they, they were moving forward. So I, um, I came up with this, this method of just a memo, a report to you, um, similar to some other department head reports. You can accept it, you know, kind of know that you have there. And if you have any questions about the project, I'm happy to answer them. Um, we, we do expect that there will be some other pass-through grants down the road. So as we get them, I'm going to use the same kind of method just to make sure you know what's going on. And I can, you know, answer any questions that you might have along the way.
And I would just add to that, um, just as a reminder and what Rista touched upon. Ordinarily, if the city were administering all of the, um, procurement, we would be bringing before the council an approval for a contract. In this case, we don't. However, this is a way for you to be informed all along the way, how those funds are being applied and how our oversight of their procurement process is being executed.
Who on the city side will be, will be monitoring that?
So Rista is the point person, um, and Rista serves as the liaison between Torrenton Standard and DECD. However, through our financial office, we also have an obligation to file all of the quarterly and annual reports. Um, so it's a combination of point person for communication and verifying procurement processes. And then, of course, the reporting through the financial office.
But looking at it from a technical point of view, who on the city side? And you'll work with our technical people too. I mean, correct?
She is our technical person.
So we don't, so in this case, we, so in this case, we don't hire an LAP that. And this is why this is a pass-through. So be the requirements for third-party verification and, um, asbestos abatement and licensed demo contractor, I'm verifying that they all have the right licenses, that they have read all the right state permits, that Department of Health permit is in, in place. And so I'm verifying all of that. But we are not actually verifying the work because the work is exceeds what we have the money for. So we're only paying, um, you know, we have a schedule of expenses. And so between working with DECD and the contractor, we're paying for very specific line items. And as that work gets done and we get the authorizations from the licensed contractor and payment request, we'll be doing that. We will verify prevailing wage because we do make sure that the, the contractor sends us the payroll sheets. Um, but from an environmental standpoint, uh, we don't own the property. It's not a city project. So we just verify that the proper sign-offs were given by the, the consultant or by the property owners, contractors.
If I understand this correctly, so this, this will represent about half of the work that's required?
Yes. Yes.
The other half percent, the other half is, um, being funded by Torrenton Standard. And, uh, when we applied for these grants on behalf of Torrenton Standard, uh, there was a clear understanding of what their obligations were. Uh, they did sign, um, documentation. There is a lien filed against their property to secure um, the, um, completion of the project in accordance with that grant application.
If that 400, if that additional $2 million, right?
Yes.
If, if that becomes 2.5 million, that 0.5 is out of them.
Yes.
Correct.
And it is, the, the contract, so, um, a significant part of the abatement has already been done. On their cost, we, we didn't get involved at all. Though the remaining abatement and demo work that needs to be done is about 2.4, 2.6 million. And so anything that exceeds the, the specific line items that we've agreed to pay for out of this grant is completely on them, which is why they're contracting with their contractor. Any change order, anything of that sorts is on them.
Do we have, do we have legal guarantees that they will complete, that they will have to complete the work?
Yes. So.
Spending a million and saying, you know, we're broke?
Well, I guess.
There's a lien against their property.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's the security. And Rista, this is a reimbursement. So they expend the funds.
Yes. So, yeah, so two things. This is a reimbursement grant. So after the funds are paid for, then they get reimbursed. And, uh, two things get filed on the land records. One is a lien um, that the state can foreclose on if they don't do what they've said. But there's also a negative pledge. So they have to follow through with their, their whole development plan that they put forth and was given this award, or the state can also foreclose on that. And they have to follow that plan for at least 10 years. Um, so there's, there's a lot of securities in place that they're going to do what they said they were going to do.
Very good. Thank you. There's a lot of money here.
There is, certainly.
Are sinkholes of issues. We all know that.
Can you share, you know, with, um, with what plans they have after the remediation of that property?
So part of the redevelopment, the redevelopment plan, so it didn't, uh, there's 24, 25 buildings on the site. Uh, they're demolishing all but three. One is currently occupied. The two that will stay will be redeveloped for, um, small, like, you know, from lighter manufacturing type uses. Um, that is, that is what is considered the project description under the grant. So that's what's going to be required. Those, those buildings must come down and those two buildings need to be rehabbed, be used for manufacturing.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? And for the, I don't know about the rest of you, but I for one, I'm anxious to see this project move forward. Um, it occupies a significant block in the city of Torrenton and a major gateway in the city of Torrenton. Um, and I feel fortunate that, um, we're able to bring these resources to bear for this, um, property owner. And hopefully we'll see progress in the next few months.
Yep.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rista. Okay, uh, item 11. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer a contract to retain the legal services of Pullman and Conley of Hartford, Connecticut.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Uh, now I know that Rista did a memo for you regarding, uh, where the funding for these services will be secured. Um, if there are questions or comments? Hearing none? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to award an additional $602 for a total grant amount of $3,802 from the lead abatement grant funds established with ARPA funds to aid in the lead abatement of 326-328 Brightwood Avenue. Do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Uh, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Hona. It threw me because her voice sounds like it's coming from out there.
And I am curious, can you hear me any better than you could?
We can. Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. Loud and clear. So, um, all right, uh, questions on this? Uh, just as a quick reminder, uh, the ARPA funds, we set aside $200,000 to work with Torrenton Area Health District um, to push these funds to properties where lead paint abatement creates a healthy, um, living, healthy home environment. Uh, this was the second grant that was awarded $3,800. Once they went in there to do the assessment work and, um, uh, report back, the funds they needed escalated another $602. So this is 30 eight oh two, was $3,200 originally, an increase of 602. If there are no questions, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer a contract for the purchase and installation of a new walk-in cooler at the senior center to the warehouse, restaurant, supply store of Waterbury, Connecticut in the amount of $19,890 as further explained in the facilities manager memo dated August 1, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to sign an agreement for EV chargers from Innovis Energy, Inc. of Rockland, Mass. in the amount of $153,570. Uh, this will be funded by EverSource Incentives and deep EV SE grant funds as further explained in the facility manager's memo dated August 3, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Uh, are there questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah, my, my mistake, my fault. I, I did not review that. What is this for again? Could you just briefly?
Jamie, do you want to come up and talk about the electric vehicle charging stations?
Oh, is that all this is?
That is, yes.
Yeah.
I know these acronyms. We have to, you know, we have to educate ourselves on those. Um, yeah, and I have, I, I understand that the 153570 should cover all of the expense of the implementation and installation. So, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, I'll call this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Council's memo dated August 7, 2023. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. And seconded by Councilwoman Oliver. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated August 7, 2023. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Manichia. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage refunds indicated on the list dated August 7, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item 18, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Do we have a motion to? Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I need my glasses. Uh, Mr. Towsey, anything on WPCA this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jamie, Sakura, anything facilities director related?
Okay.
Chief Borden or Deputy Chief Tripp? Excellent. Thank you. Tim Cody, Superintendent of Streets, anything? Parks and streets. You're all good. Thank you. Penny, you thought you'd be hiding from me. I saw you move your seat. Anything to add this evening? Thank you. Rista, anything else? Good. Going to the city clerk's office. Nothing. All right. Item 19, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to go to the screen first. Anything this evening, Councilwoman Hona?
I have nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Nothing from me, mayor. Thanks.
Councilwoman Manichia.
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cavanaro.
Yes.
Fire away.
I, I would like, based, based on reports in the newspaper and just uh, Facebook chatter and just people around town, there's, there's two issues that, that are, that are being talked about. One is street repairs and streets like Highland Avenue that are being paved and then repaved and, you know, and then getting washed out and repaved. And I think people want some explanation as to why that's occurring. Um, considering so many of our streets have been there for 2,000 years. Um, so that would be number one. I'm not asking for you tonight because or somebody.
It does. Yes.
That, and I think that should be addressed. And the second one is the light issue, the street light issue.
Yes.
There's an article about one street light, but now I'm being told, or it's on chatter again, that there are multiple areas of the city where lights have been decommissioned and people are not happy. They, you know, because of safety concerns involved, if you get a report on what the thinking is and why and what the number is, just to put, was a lot of, just for transparency. So people know that we're on top of it. It's not being done randomly and we're not, you know, point, we're not being, we're, we're very thoughtful about what this approach is and why we're doing it that way.
Excellent. Yeah.
Go, mayor, because I don't know this. This is coming secondhand to me. I'm told there are people who are, who are talking and like over 100 lights have been decommissioned. That's, that's. That's that's a number that's going around. And I'm just saying.
So instead of putting our department heads, sure, a fairly reliable source?
It's well, I'm getting, yeah.
Who shall remain nameless?
Nameless.
So instead of putting our department heads that can answer those questions on the spot this evening, Mr. Cody, and what I'll do is we'll speak with Ray Drew and bring back a report on both the street lights. And specific to Highland Avenue, which was storm damage, it's not a question of pavement, substandard, street maintenance. That was storm damage, you know, these storms are 100-year storms that we're dealing with. And there's an explanation as to why that road was undermined as a result of the water surge. But I would prefer that the department heads answer those questions so you can ask more. Good, thank you. And Mr. Oliver, anything this evening?
Standing in the way of the door.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Yeah, all right, but we still have to open the meeting to the public. So item 20, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comments on the agenda items only, please. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Second by Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To the public on agenda items only.
Tom Kandeford, 1821 Winston Road. A question popped into my mind about those EV charging stations. Now, was it part of the grant funding approval where that's going to be available to the public on a no-charge basis or is there going to be some type of a charge? And then if it is the city's responsibility to purchase the electricity, is there kind of, what are you, what are you doing there? Is there any limits on that?
Okay, no, it's a great question, and I don't know, Jamie, if you wanted to. Now I know for public comment, it's Mr. Kandeford.
So the EV chargers are being installed at three different parking lots. The parking lot at City Hall, Municipal Parking Lot, Riverview and Franklin Plaza. The only charges would be to recoup the city money for electric and whatever parking fees would be during those times of charging. So it's not for really the city to profit, it's just to cover our overall costs. Plus, there's a cost for the payoffs that'll be included in that fee. So it should really be no cost to the city, but just passed on.
Thank you, Jamie.
That'll be the fee of whatever it is per hour for charging.
Right, Franklin Plaza, it doesn't seem like the most high-usage area.
I didn't hear, say it again.
Why was, why was Franklin Plaza the third location?
We were on this first round of doing this, trying to get a lot in the downtown area. So any public spots, plus we also had to try and make it where there's readily available power because these things consume quite a lot of power.
Okay.
So it's making sure you have the electrical infrastructure as well as, you know, public access to it, but these will all be public spots.
Thank you, Jamie. Still open to the public for questions on agenda items. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into item 21, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Councilman Kevin Arrow, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all very much.
Everybody, have a good night.